Okay. Good morning to members, officers, press and public attending this meeting of the Corporate Parenting Panel. My name is councillor Stephen Rowe. I am the chairman for the panel. Councillor Andrew Higgs, vice-chairman of the panel, is obviously also in attendance. I would like to warmly welcome Sarah Bancroft as the panel's new representative from the Lincolnshire Community Health Service NHS Trust, which I'm afraid is just not a long enough title. We have longer ones. Welcome also to the following officers. We have Tara Jones, Assistant Director, Children's Safeguarding; Andrew Morris, Head of Service, Leaving Care, Semi-Independent Living and Unaccompanied Children; Deborah Crawford, Head of Service, Fostering and Adoption; Sarah Lane, Virtual School Head; Paul Fisher, Corporate Parenting Manager; Nicola Wilkinson, NHS Lincolnshire ICB. See, Andy, your title was a lot cheaper, shorter before. Can I remind you that the audiovisual feed of this formal public meeting is being broadcast live via the county council's website? And with this in mind, I would like to welcome members of the public watching this live. As the meeting is being streamed in the usual way, I would like to remind you all that your comments will remain accessible online and can be reported by the media. I would like to begin with a health and safety announcement. There is no fire drill plan this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors and leave the building through the reception into the front car park. We then need to wait in the car park until further instructions. At this point, may I remind you that your mobiles, laptops and iPads should now be on silent mode for the duration of the meeting. If you wish to ask questions or make statements in the course of the meeting, please do. Can you please raise your hand? Can I also remind members of the panel to switch on their microphones when invited to speak, to speak close to the microphone, and to switch their microphone off after you make your contribution? Requests to speak will be collated by the vice-chairman. Please, can you keep your questions and contributions succinct and concise? We'll now move on to the main agenda. Item one is apologies for absent replacement members. Emily, do we have any apologies or replacement members, please?
Thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies from Polly Coombs and Caroline Saunders, and if I can also note the apologies of Heather Sandy and Rachel Freeman.
Thank you. Do we... Sorry. Item two is declarations of members' interests. Do any members wish to declare any interest that has not been declared previously in their pecuniary interest forms? If something comes up as we go through, then obviously you can mention it. Item three is minutes of the meeting of the panel on the 18th of January 2024. This item is to confirm the minutes of our previous meeting, which can be found on pages three to six of the agenda pack as a correct record. I've been made aware that there are a couple of small amendments to bullet points two and three on page five of the agenda pack. Bullet point two has been amended to reflect that there were 101 unaccompanied asylum-seeking children in Lincolnshire, and the maximum Lincolnshire was expected to take was 144. Bullet point three has been amended to reflect that when children go on remand, instead of entering custody, they would become children in care. Can I ask for a proposer, please? Proposed by councillor Seer and a second, please. Councillor Matthews, thank you. We will now vote on the minutes. You are voting on whether you agree that the minutes are a correct record, subject to the above amendments to minute 41. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Those minutes are agreed. Agenda item four, announcements by the chairman and lead officers. First off, earlier this week, we were informed of the sad passing of councillor Julie Killie, who has been a member of this panel since November 2020. Councillor Killie served as the representative for the Lincoln Park Electoral Division and was the Labour Group representative on the Children and Young People Scrutiny Committee and Corporate Parenting Panel. On behalf of this panel, I'd like to extend our deepest condolences to her family during this difficult time. Sorry. At a previous meeting, there was an article which covered visiting members to our children's homes. And at that stage, I said that come the end of February, if we hadn't had visiting members able to go everywhere, then I would cover what was left. I'm pleased to say that we have two more councillors that have agreed to cover two of our homes, or the two homes that we hadn't got any before. Councillor Gary Taylor is going to cover Spalding and councillor Matt Bowles is going to cover Gainsborough. I think they're doing the training any time now. We didn't manage to get a visit done to Spalding, and I've arranged to personally go next week to make sure that that's done in the cycle. And I'm pleased to say that we now have councillors available to attend all those homes, which I think is great. So now moving on to announcements from lead officers. Are there any announcements? Tara?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'm really delighted to report that Riverhead House, which is our brand-new-built children's home based in Louth, is now fully registered with Ofsted, and we have our first child placed. As you will recall in subsequent papers, our supported accommodation at Denton and Ralston, that's in Grantham and Gainsborough, we had to register with Ofsted. And I'm delighted to say that, again, we're fully registered with Ofsted, Andy as the service manager and myself as the nominated individual.
So you did that just to prove me wrong, didn't you? So that means that I'd need another visiting member to visit Louth? Yeah. But I'm sure we can get that arranged quite quickly. Thank you, Tara. So we move on to agenda item five. This item on pages seven to 46 of the agenda pack sets out the annual report for the Lincolnshire Virtual School for the academic year 2022/23. The report was presented by Sarah Lane, Virtual School Head. The panel is invited to review and endorse the Lincolnshire Virtual School annual report for that academic year 2022/23, attached as appendix A. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm very proud to present the annual report for the virtual school for the academic year. So this is from September 22 until July 23. The report outlines the ongoing work of the virtual school in promoting educational outcomes, not only for our children in care, but for those children that are previously looked after, and more recently, for children with a social worker, which is for children at child protection and child in need. The role of the virtual school is very much working in partnership with professionals to ensure all of these vulnerable groups of young people are making the very best academic progress they can. Specifically for our children in care, we are making sure that there is no drifting delay in securing school places, they have effective personal education plans that are reviewed termly. Our young people in care are accessing appropriate support to promote attendance, attainment and progress, and we allocate pupil premium to support that particular cohort of young people. Our role with children who are previously looked after and children with a social worker is very different. We don't carry out those personal education plans, and we don't have any funding that we allocate to those groups, but very much we act as educational advocates and make sure that these young people, again, are making the very best progress they can, educationally supported by relevant partners. If I just go through some of the key highlights of the report, I'm very proud to have a stable and resilient team. We're a team with very low staff turnover, very low sickness levels. In February, so partway through this academic year, obviously, our previous virtual school head retired, and I stepped up into the virtual head post on an interim basis, which did result in a vacancy at the team manager post. But the team stepped up and have carried out additional duties temporarily. We were also fortunate through grant funding to recruit two additional virtual school coordinators. They're the people in the team who are actually working with the young people, working with the education settings, social workers, foster carers, to ensure our children are having high-quality, termly personal education plans. The coordinators are allocated to the young people when the young people first come into care, or when they are already in care and turn three, and for the most part will stay with those young people and are often a very consistent person within those young people's lives. The coordinators at the moment are averaging workloads of being allocated to between 65 and 70 young people. So each coordinator is responsible for ensuring that all of those young people have their personal education plans, and professionals are working together to promote education. With regards to training, a highlight of last academic year was that we revised and further developed our training pathway. So we have a now robust training pathway for designated teachers, who are the key adults in education settings, who oversee children in care and previously looked after children. And the training pathway also now has courses that can be accessed by foster carers, by teaching assistants, social workers and our children's services colleagues. We ensure that the pathway offers training opportunities for those not only new to role, but for those that are experienced and would like to further develop their understanding of meeting the needs of our vulnerable children. We also held our first annual conference since before Covid. It was a very successful conference with lots of positive feedback and was attended by well over 100 designated teachers. And we've had some really fascinating responses from some of the educational professionals around how they have reviewed and changed their practice over this last year since attending the conference. We've given a breakdown this year of the characteristics of our children in care cohort, and you'll see from the data that a significant percentage, so 22% of the cohort are our post-16 young people. We also have a high percentage of young people who either have education, health and care plans, or are accessing SEN support. This is in line with the SEND code of practice. This is a recognition that those young people have additional needs that require provision over and above what's routinely available in a mainstream school. So for those young people at SEN support, the school will be putting extra interventions in place and will reviewing those regularly to make sure that the young person is making the progress possible. For those children with an EHC plan, they are the young people whose needs are significantly over and above what a school would routinely offer. And those young people with EHC plans will either be in mainstream schools with additional funded support, or will be attending special schools. And for our young people, you'll see the breakdown of need. There are areas of need within the SEND code of practice, and for our children in care, the majority of that special educational need is social, emotional and mental health difficulties. The report also indicates that the majority of our pupils continue to attend good or outstanding settings, which we're very proud of, and that 99% of our children have a PEP that is reviewed, that's a personal education plan, that is reviewed termly. For those young people, there is always the expectation that every single young person will have a personal education plan. Sometimes circumstances and availability of professionals may result in one or two young people not having a personal education plan reviewed within that term, but they are prioritised immediately at the start of the following term. You'll also see for the breakdown of our allocation of pupil premium, we provide a significant proportion of the funding directly to our educational settings to ensure that the young people are accessing appropriate interventions and support. This is discussed as part of the personal education plan. So the personal education plan will be looking at the young person's attendance, their progress and attainment. It will set targets for the young person, and the school will be asked to identify if there is anything further they can be doing to help our young person either make progress or accelerated progress towards their targets. And we allocate the funding on a monthly basis to schools to ensure there is no delay in the schools accessing the financial support to put the necessary interventions in place. We're continuing to have a really focused piece of work on trying to develop our young people's attendance in school. So as you'll see from the report, we've introduced much more focused attendance tracking, not only in the personal education plan at an individual level, sorry, but also at a management level. We're tracking cohorts of young people so that we can identify any emerging trends in reduced attendance and look at what support can be put in place and try to understand the barriers for that young person attending school. The DEFREY have also recognised nationally that there needs to be further work on improving school attendance for all young people, and they published guidance. And certainly now, there is a much bigger focus on all professionals working together that involves the education setting, parents and carers, and the local authority to improve school attendance for all children. With regards to the actual attainment and progress for our children in care, you'll see we've got an increasing trend, so some positives, some good news stories. Our early years cohort, we had an increase in the percentage of young people who achieved a good level of development at the end of reception, and we had some increasing trends at key stage two. And we are now having a particular focus on how we can better support our young people's progress in mathematics, particularly at key stage two. At key stage four, again, a pleasing increase in the number of children who did achieve grade four plus in English and maths GCSEs. And we've also provided some data this year to evidence how our young people have made progress. Those that have been in care some time, from their key stage two assessments to their key stage four assessments, they actually made accelerated progress. So although sometimes not all of our young people are achieving grade four GCSEs, they have made significant progress from their starting points. I think what we've tried to do in the report as well is not only measure the success of our young people by their academic attainment and progress, but also by their personal successes. So including the case studies and some examples of our young people's achievements outside of the academic arena. We celebrate these on a monthly basis at our team meetings and are delighted to see photographs of our young people taking part in creative performances as part of shows, practising their music because they're accessing music lessons, receiving certificates for being recognised for their good skills outside of the academic arena within school, and also their successes in their outer school and hobbies and interests that they also are fully immersed in. I've included a little summary of work we've done for the previously looked after children, so that's children who have been in care and have left care through an adoption, a special guardianship order, or a child arrangement order. And we work closely with our post-adoption team to make sure that parents can reach out for advice and support, particularly if they've got any concerns around their young people's access and progress within education. And for children with a social worker, this was a new statutory requirement, a non-statutory requirement that was introduced, and we are working closely, and we've been doing some particular work with our social care colleagues on how best to support children at child protection and child in need to access education. I've summarised the report with our future priorities, which are very much around working in partnership to continue to promote attendance and reduce suspensions, to continue to be creative with interventions to promote progress and attainment, making sure that we are allocating pupil premium, and it is having maximum impact for our young people, not only for our statutory school-aged young people, but also for our post-16 cohort, where the government have now confirmed that they will be continuing with the post-16 pupil premium allocations for another year, and ensuring that all our professionals continue to have access to high-quality training to help them understand this bespoke needs of our young people. So that's a brief summary of the report. I'd now like to welcome and hopefully answer any questions.
Thank you. Andrew, do we have any questions?
You have to bear with me, because it's not so much a question as a, can you explain this? Because I don't understand it. 31% of children post-16 are in schools that acquire improvement or special measures. We clearly like to put our children into good or outstanding schools, but school classifications change all the time, subject to often inspections. So I'm interested in, is that 31% consistent? Is it geographically located? Is it one school that's shifted from being good to being RI or something like that? And then I'm also interested in the absence rate amongst that cohort, to see if that's linked with the quality of school they attend. That's not a very clear question, but have we got some outlier schools where we're putting our year 12 students, where they're choosing not to go because the school's not very good? Or is it just rotten luck that 31% are in not very good schools? Sorry, you can see that, I don't know how to formulate the question, but you can see the area that I'm interested in.
Absolutely. So for our post-16 cohort, there is a small number of young people who are accessing post-16, six forms, sorry, six forms which are linked to schools. The majority of our children are accessing FE colleges, and it's some of those FE colleges that have had a requires improvement outcome. Obviously, for post-16, we always want our young people to access in the most local provision that's available. And so when some of our key post-16 colleges have a requires improvement outcome, geographically it's not appropriate for those young people to be travelling long distances to another college. So we would always encourage our young people to apply to those settings that are geographically the closest, and if they are required improvement, we make sure that there are no concerns regarding safeguarding, and those young people have additional visits throughout the year to make sure that they're on track. As you rightly point out, the Ofsted outcomes are changing regularly, and I think you'll find it will be a different percentage because of the progress of some of the colleges in achieving a good Ofsted outcome since. With regards to attendance, attendance for post-16 is tracked at an individual level through the cohort, sorry, through the personal education plan. So we do look at that regularly. The personal education plan will record the young person's attendance, not only in a percentage, but also to say whether that is expected or below expected. And we will ensure that the PEP has actions to improve attendance, but attendance for our post-16 cohort is not statutory, it's not measured as closely, there are no national and comparative datas. So to reassure you, we do measure it, we do address it on a termly basis, but we're unable to report on it because of the availability of national data.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Matthews?
Thank you. So that 31% is quite high, but you're suggesting that that is a result of one or more FE colleges changing grading from good to FE. So what I'm interested in is, and you've explained, I have no question with the data, the story it's telling is what I'm trying to drag out. Are those colleges which have gone below the bar, if you like, causing students to not attend, or is that a completely unrelated issue? So it's just the attendance? If we'd got post-16 students heading FE and the college has gone beyond the bar because it's frankly not very good, is that their issue or our issue is really what I'm asking?
The attendance is not a worry for our post-16 students generally. Sorry, was that... No, we're not worried about our post-16 attendance data and don't feel that that Ofsted outcome does have an impact on our young people's attendance. We feel the colleges that we work with are very supportive of our young people. Although it's not a statutory requirement, they will have a lead designated lecturer who oversees the support that our young people receive, who attend and contribute to the PEPs, and actually put a high level of support in for our young people.
That's great, thank you. Councillor Clark? Councillor Seer?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for the report. There's lots of positive things in there, lots of data, and I can see there's been really good positive outcomes on there. But I've got three questions for you that I'd like you to look at for me. Just briefly, on the team manager post, how is the recruitment going for that? The second thing, on page 30, there's a persistent absence rate that you've talked about there with a big jump from 12.3% to 24.5%. Could you give me a bit more, clarify a bit more what's going on with that and how you're going to address that? I know you've given some outline there, and I do appreciate that the reasons for all of that will be complex, but if you could just advise how you're going to address that and what is now currently in place to deal with that. And the third thing is on page 43, paragraph five. 24 children on child protection or child in need plan, they were excluded without representation or appeal by family or social worker. How did that happen and how are you going to address that in the future? I know you've explained that again, that future representation must be there because obviously they're not going to have their aspirations met. So that's something that was quite worrying actually when I read that. So I just need to know how you're going to address those things and hope the recruitment goes well. Thank you.
Thank you. Shall I let you know when the applications are available? Yes. So whilst the interim, while I was doing the virtual school head post on an interim basis, it wasn't appropriate. None of the team were wanting to step up to the role, and it wasn't appropriate because initially it was interim just for six months and then a further six months. Now it's been finalised. We're just waiting for job re-evaluation because of the increase in duties, and the recruitment will be going live, hopefully, as soon as we can, just awaiting that job re-evaluation. With regards to the persistent absence, I think this is a national picture for all children and quite a worrying picture. The DEFREY did promote some statutory guidance, and one of the expectations for all children now is that the local authority has to hold termly targeted support meetings with every single education setting. So there's a variety of teams in Lincolnshire who are now carrying out termly visits with all schools to look at all children's attendance, to look at how we can improve that. And the indications are that that is starting to have a positive impact. That was only introduced in September. This relates to the previous academic year, so we're hoping to see some improvement. With regards to attendance, it is very complex, as you say, and based very much on an individual basis. It was very difficult for young people to get back into the routine of attending school following the Covid lockdowns. For some of our young people, it was very difficult, who did attend school during the Covid lockdowns, where there were much fewer children in school, to then start re-engaging with a whole school population back. Some of our young people felt very, found very challenging. So for any young person that isn't attending regularly, the PEP meeting will document that. There will be a multi-agency discussion about what we are all going to do to try and promote that, because it may be that the young person has had a placement move, which means that transport has had to be set up. So we're working as quickly as possible to make sure transport is in place. It may be that the young person is having some challenging times through their court proceedings, and socially, emotionally, they're struggling with understanding what's happening with the court proceedings, and sometimes they may go on a part-time timetable for a short period of time until they're ready to re-engage. So it is something that we are working really, really hard with.
really hard with and working with carers, with our residential homes, and trying to understand from the young person what the barriers are, and making sure that everybody is supporting in whatever way they can to try and remove those barriers. So it is our ongoing priority, and it is something that nationally is also an ongoing priority. I think you'll also see the, you know, one of the key reasons for our young people not attending is down to illness. And again, there has been some national media around understanding what that means now for young people. And I certainly, you'll probably hear the adverts of saying, if it's just a cough or a cold, they're still well enough to go into school. So I think there is that sort of reluctance now to inflict our young people into areas where they might infect others or be infected. So we are working, and certainly I know the fostering team are very proactive in working with foster carers to, to help foster carers understand any particular, and get over any barriers to attendance. With regards to the final question, so the child in need, the permanent exclusion, this has only been a recent change, that there is an expectation that the social workers can attend. So revised statutory guidance actually put a statutory duty on schools to, that they must inform the social worker now about the permanent exclusion, and the social worker can attend the governor meeting to decide whether to uphold the exclusion or not. So when we started to look as part of our non-statutory duties to look at what barriers there were for this, these children, we could see that there were a significant number with permanent exclusions. Now, parents are invited, as they have the majority, you know, they have all parental responsibility, to attend those governors' meetings. And a lot of parents were choosing not to attend those meetings. And actually, the role of the social worker at those meetings is to provide any additional information that the governing body may not be aware of factors through their social care involvement that may have contributed to the incident that led to the permanent exclusion. So what we've been doing over, since we've identified that as an area for work, a DLT paper approved the focus on social workers attending. We've been upskilling our social work colleagues on understanding what challenge they should be putting into schools, and what information they should be providing, helping them understand the structure and the format of the very formal governor's meeting, demystifying some of the myths that people thought, well, it's too late, the school's already issued a permanent exclusion. Actually, it's not too late because it's the governors to decide whether to uphold that or not. So you've still got that opportunity for the school to overturn the permanent exclusion. So it's very much work in progress, but social workers have really embraced this and taken it on board, and are now advocating. Parents are still sometimes choosing not to attend those meetings, but we are trying to show the importance of putting that challenge. But for some parents, they feel actually they just want their young person to go to a different school. They don't want to challenge the permanent exclusion because it may be the child wasn't happy there and they're wanting to move them. So it's been a real focus of getting not only processes in place, but upskilling everybody to understand the process and what they can contribute to the process. So, but still, you know, parents have that ultimate right to decide whether they want to go to the meeting and put the challenge in or not. So.
Thank you. Councillor Seer. No, sorry, I thought you, Councillor Seer, I thought you said you were looking, no, I apologise. Councillor Matthews.
I didn't say earlier, it's a really good report, and it's really warming. This is more a point of information. At the bottom of page twenty-eight, there's a table that shows attainment in reading, whirring and maths from key stage one to the end of key stage two. I'm ever so sorry to point out that, it's the teacher in me. And I'm also going to make a request that, as a former inspector of mathematics, I'd be really pleased if you could refer to it as mathematics in formal reports. I know we use maths as a shorthand every day, but if it could be reading, writing and mathematics, it would just, it would please me. There's no other reason. But, sorry, so I'm saying this with a smile, and I'm sorry to point it out, but I like it, whirting.
Andrew.
Thank you, Chairman. I've got two questions, if I may, Sarah. The first one is one of the, one of your answers to councillor Clark, when parents don't want to attend with the, with the social workers to discuss further issues, do we go back, in that case, do we go back afterwards to give them an update and hopefully that they'll see the importance of the information that we glean from that? And the second one, I'll let you answer that before I move on to the next question, if I may.
Absolutely, yes. So the, the social worker would attend and would still contribute to the meeting. At the end of that meeting, the governors will decide whether to uphold the permanent exclusion or not. And the parents then have the right to request an independent review panel. And so even if the parents didn't attend, the, the social worker will feedback the outcome and will talk, and certainly our pupil reintegration team as well, will support parents in understanding that there is another opportunity to challenge the decision through an independent review panel if they now feel that they want to challenge that. So absolutely, parents are kept fully on board of their, their options and their opportunities to be involved in challenging the, the permanent exclusions.
Thank you for that. The second question is on page twenty-two of the agenda pack, the annual report highlights that sixty-seven per cent of Lincolnshire children in care have SEN, which is above the England, England's figure of fifty-seven per cent and East Midlands' figure of sixty per cent. Do we know what the reasons for this increase are? Or is it just that we, we investigate these figures and come up with a far more accurate sum? Or is there something peculiar about Lincolnshire children? Okay.
I don't think it's anything peculiar about our children particularly, but Lincolnshire for all its population does have a higher rate of children with education, health and care plans. So it's not just our children in care, it's all children in Lincolnshire. I think there has been a change. People are recognising that following the Covid lockdowns and the impact of that, some of our young people, and this is all children, not just children in care, but some of our young people's needs are much more complex, that schools are starting to struggle to meet the needs of. And I think it is a national trend that there is a significant increase in, in education, health and care plans. What we're trying to work with schools is to say, you, there is more that you can be doing without putting in a requesting for an education health needs, EHC needs assessment request. It is a statutory process, and parents can also request this as well as schools and education settings. And I think because schools are seeing greater challenges with some of their young people, bigger gaps in their learning as a result of the lockdowns, although the government have put lots of additional funding in, there are still those gaps in attainment. And I think unfortunately, schools and parents are feeling that sometimes children's needs can't be met without an EHC plan when actually they can. It's looking at what that universal offer is in education. So I think it's something that Lincolnshire SEND as a whole have been looking at and reminding professionals and parents, so educational professionals and parents, that you can put in a much more robust level of support without having to just go for an education, health and care plan. I think a lot of, unfortunately, parents and professionals think that's the only way you can support children who have got needs when absolutely it isn't. So I know the SEND team are doing a lot of work with education settings and parents to understand young people's needs can be met without having to have an education, health and care plan.
Just one from, from me, Sarah. The virtual school supports children in care up to the age of eighteen. What happens after the age of eighteen when they become care leavers? Is there a role for the virtual school to support these people?
Absolutely. And I think that's something that we're constantly looking at. There are lots of indications from the government that they're feeling the virtual school should be involved for longer for, with our young people's education. We've got a really good relationship with obviously Andy and with the Leaving Care Service. At this moment in time, we have been ending our involvement when the young people turn eighteen, unless the young people are asking us to continue to be involved. We have to get the young people's permission. We're not doing PEPs, but we are, because our coordinators have often got a very good relationship with these young people and have been there with them for some time, we, we feel, we want to know how they, how they're continuing to get on. So a lot of the coordinators are still regularly updated by the young people. But certainly, Andy and I have been looking at a pathway of support and are looking at potentially extending our involvement and personal education plans for those young people that are in education up to the end of the academic year that they turn eighteen rather than their eighteenth birthday, which at the moment is over and above our statutory duties, but something that we feel will make sure that those young people in education sustain their involvement in education and actually have clear destinations to go at the end of the academic year.
Okay, that's great, thank you. So, where are we? Thank you. That concludes this discussion. I propose that the panel has reviewed the report and endorses the Lincolnshire Virtual School Annual Report for the Academic Year 2022/23, attached as appendix A. Can I ask you to raise your hands if you're in agreement? Again, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Sarah. Item six, Children in Care Performance Report, quarter three. This item is on pages forty-seven to seventy of the agenda pack, and sets out the key performance information for quarter three of 2023/24. That is relevant to the work of the Corporate Parenting Panel. The report was presented by Tara Jones, Assistant Director, Children Safeguarding. The panel is invited to review and comment on the performance information contained in the appendices of this report, and recommend any actions or changes to, to the executive council for children's services, community safety, procurement and migration. Thank you, Tara.
Thank you. So as you're all aware, there's sixteen measures in total that relate to our children in care. Of these measures in quarter three, two did not meet their target, and two are ahead of the target set by the services. So I'll discuss first the measures that did not meet their target. So care leavers in education, employment or training. You'll remember in quarter two, we increased and we reached forty-nine per cent of our care leavers in education, employment or training. This has fluctuated slightly down in this quarter three. Our Leaving Care Service continue to monitor every single young person who's not in education, employment and training. And there is a huge piece of transformational work taking place at the moment across all of our Leaving Care Service. And there is a dedicated work stream, particularly looking at our care leavers that are not in education, employment and training. There's a lot of work going on because I know that members are really a bit concerned about Lincolnshire's figure because it is slightly, just slightly below statistical neighbours. So there is lots, lots for us to do in, in this space. So if I just go through a couple of bits, and I may bring Andy into this because he has the lead for this work stream. So as I said, we've got a transformation, Leaving Care Transformation Programme with a particular work stream that's EET focused. And that will include, well, it actually includes Leaving Care, our partner agencies, the virtual school, DWP, children in care teams involved in that work stream. We've created a dedicated children in care employment coach, because I think it's really important that we really focus on keeping those children in care sixteen and seventeen in education, and focus on ensuring that they remain in EET as opposed to becoming NEET as, as care leavers. And that particular post is going to focus on that area, but then there's a second post that will be particularly targeting those, those care leavers post eighteen. We've introduced co-location of the Department for Work and Pensions Youth Employment Workers within the Leaving Care Service. And we've also, well, Bernardo's have commissioned some new software, and that software will enable us to reach out to all of our care leavers and our twenty-one plus care leavers at any point in time. So for example, if there's an apprenticeship opportunity, we'll be able to cascade that out. If there's a course around CV skills, we'll be able to cascade that down. If there's a new resource available or information, we'll be able to cascade that very, very quickly to our cohort. Is there anything else you want to add about the work?
No, I think it's just say that we are putting as much energy and focus into this as possible. And what we're trying to do is wrap around with those partners and look at that transition point, because what we noticed is, in terms of education, employment, training, it's sustained up to eighteen, then drops off on the virtual school leave. So it's looking at how we kind of cross that threshold. And that's going to be an ongoing piece of work as we're looking at the redesign of the Leaving Care Service through transformation. That's going to be one of our key focuses. I think if there's anything else, I'll try and pick up in, in members' questions.
And the second measure that didn't meet the target was the percentage of children in care with an up-to-date health check, although this is on an upward trajectory. So we're up eighty-eight point seven per cent, and last quarter we were at eighty-seven point nine per cent. Again, there's been a huge amount of work, data cleansing, because some of, some of this is down to errors on our mosaic recording system. And so all of the teams get their, their monthly reports, they can see, you know, what dental checks are coming up or are overdue, and also the health checks. So I've got an acute high on that performance, but there will always be some children, as you, as you know, some young people, and we're doing a bit more of a deep dive into these sixteen, seventeen year olds that are refusing to access their health assessment, preferring to make their own arrangements to see their GP. We do need to do a little bit more work about actually, what are the reasons? Is it because they're accessing their own healthcare? Or actually, is there some other barrier to them engaging in their health check? That's going to culminate in a report that's going to our directorate leadership team in the next month. So I'm hoping to be able to bring that data to the next corporate parenting panel. But it is on an upward, upward trajectory, which is pleasing to see. And then there are two measures that are ahead of the target. And the first one is stability of placements of children in care. So that, that's around the numbers of moves, so the numbers of placement moves that any child will have. And this indicator identifies those children who experience three placement moves within a year. At this point, the performance is, is well within the target range at four point nine per cent. However, it is one of those cumulative measures. And so it, it can be subject to slight change, either decrease or increase as the year progresses. But that's a real testament of the work of the fostering service, our children in care workers, the introduction of our value in care approach in ensuring that children have the right placements first time, and that the most appropriate support to meet their needs and their strength is, is wrapped around those children. So that's really pleasing to see, that, that target. And then we'll come to the final measure, the exceeded target, and that's the sixteen and seventeen year old children in care who are participating in learning. And it's above target. And again, this is a testament to a lot of the work that the virtual school and the children in care teams have been doing. Again, I've mentioned the employment coach. They're targeting in particular those year ten and eleven. And also though that small cohort, those children who have remained not engaging in, in, in learning. So that concludes my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank, thank you. Councillor Seer.
Thank you very much. A very good report. Two questions. You talk about children in care and do leave and training and never get a job in that way. Yeah, that's like, I got that like sixteen or seventeen. How can we try to hope that way to create this for the younger people to interest when they leave the care or leave school, to interest to work, that one of them? And other one is, I understand about the younger children don't want to do like a health check, you know, the teenage. These are ongoing, we're talking about it in Maborsor, because Maborsor go to have a future living, and Lincoln University work together. They try to work it out. How can target these young people? I have a young teenage grandchildren. One of my granddaughter, she'll be seventeen, eighteen soon, when she were about fifteen, sixteen. Because the children got like to go to the doctor. Because the children got like to go to the doctor without the parent. But these people, children who in the care, my granddaughter went without her mother, her mother found out. So how can we hope these young people to go for health check? I know they have teeth problem and they have like, when they young, they can do Google search on internet, you know, these day, it's doctor internet can help you. But we can somehow to make more friendly for the children, especially young carer to go in to talk to practical or like, I think, even I know the teeth now in the school for, you know, safe protecting yourself if you have relationship. So how can we, to hope these children to be more friendly, stay the scare because like, they don't want to see the doctor, they don't want to see because it like more formal, especially if the children are in the care, they'll be more fear than the children have not in the care. So that's, that's, that I wonder, which way can we make it more friendly thing for them? That's all, thank you.
Thank you, that's a really, really good point. And I think for me, it starts really, really early. And I think it kind of starts with that health promotion, you know, right from those early years settings. Right, you know, even from within family hubs, you know, that parents can get support around the health needs of their children. And then should they come into care, it's around that support that the foster carers provide, around supporting the children, eat well, be healthy, et cetera. So I think it's a bit of a life cycle. And then you have the other cohort of children that come in later, which is some of the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, which then is a little bit more tricky in terms of supporting them for the health, the health needs.
Yes, Counselor.
Thank you. It's, it is a good question, but because my, my point, it mean like, it is lifestyle. If the children have a good family, you know, like my grandchildren are, they look after. But from you start the young care, young children, if they're being in a foster from the younger age to the teenage year, if you, they move from foster person to person and how we, children, for these children to be looked after well. I know we are, but somewhere it like feel their safety, that's how I think, it more friendly, you know, but because it's lifestyle very important, that very important how to teach the children, you know, I mean, my area, some children never eat vegetable because the parent don't eat vegetable in that respect. Somehow we have to try promotion to help these people, I think, these young children, that's what I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clark.
Thanks, Chair. Actually, Tara, I'm nitpicking a bit. I just want to ask about, you did touch on it and you explained it very well, about the, the performance report. And it was about children, I've lost my page now, I wrote it down, page sixty-eight, Care Leavers in Education, Training and Employment. It says there were twenty-eight unable to work due to illness, stroke, disability. My nitpick is around illness, stroke, disability, they are the ill or the disabled. And I, I'm not sure whether those two should be lumped together. And I just ask really at your indulgence, would you look at that? If the disabled, the disabled, others severely disabled, if they're ill, that's a different thing. And, and so the two things, it may be a bit insulting to lump those together, do you know what I mean? Being married to a disabled person, you know, he's not ill, he's disabled. So I just wanted to just highlight that really. Thank you, thank you. Sorry to nitpick.
No, 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 that, that's, that's a really good point. And yeah, we'll look at that for the next commentary. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Matthews.
It's the same area of concern that I ask about, which is children in, in care, in, not in NEET, if you like. And my colleague has just raised a really interesting point about the clumsy language that's perhaps been used in there. It shocks me that we've still got these high numbers despite the fact that report after report after report, we're asking you to do something different, something extra, something moving on, and it's not shifting. So either it's a hopeless cause, they shouldn't be in there because they're wrongly classified, or we're not doing it properly. I don't understand why it's not moving if we're, if we're asking you to put that extra effort in. And I know they're a difficult group, we've heard all the, all the things, but this is their chance and we've got to be seen to do absolutely everything we can to enable them to take that chance. And sometimes I think we might have to take a harder line on this. Thanks.
Counselor.
Thank you, Chairman. I've got two questions, Tara. The targets that we've not, that we've fallen a little bit short on, do the children that fall into both, either category, do they tend to be the same children? Are they in, as a rule disenfranchised with the system? Or is it that the system can't provide them with the extra needs, especially with employment? Because it must be difficult for them getting backwards and forwards to, to work. And I wonder what we do as a council to, to support them. Thank you.
Yeah, I think you'll find that there will be some, that, that children in one of the measures, the young people in one of the measures will also feature in the other measure. Because what we do know is some of those young people that are not engaging in employment, education and training have got really significant, complex needs and mental health needs. So again, through, through the transformation, our staying close, staying connected, we have put emotional wellbeing and mental health workers into the Leaving Care Service to support their, those children. And so it might be that those sixteen and seventeen-year-olds that are not engaging are also not accessing their health assessments. So when we drill down into that piece of work to look at the characteristics of those sixteen, seventeens that are not accessing, accessing their health assessments, that will give us that richer data, which is coming to DLT in the next three or four weeks. So I'm hoping I can pull out that, that cohort that span across both of those measures.
Just one supplemental question to that, Tara. The children in both cohorts, are they children that have come into care relatively late in their lives? And does that, as opposed to very, very young ones? So I just wonder if there is a tendency for the older that you are, then you brought into care, that the bigger chip that you have on, on your shoulder regarding, you know, society and, and you, you just cross with everybody?
I think it's a, I think it's a bit of a combination. I think, you know, we do have some young people that have been in the care system and unfortunately have had some placement moves, particularly in externally commissioned placements, real complex behaviours. And we're focusing on actually stabilising placements, supporting them as best we can. And for some of those children, actually, they will be receiving some education, but some of them are in between placements, so will fall out of that. Yeah.
And absolutely, we, we were looking, when we were looking at the attendance, we looked at the young people who came into care during the summer holidays, this is just a snapshot example. And of the young people who came into care during the summer holidays, fifty per cent of those young people were already not attending school. They had attendance of less than fifty per cent when they came into care. So although we are working to try and improve that, that takes time and that missing education is going to have an impact not only on their educational outcomes, which may then open doors for them post sixteen into employment and further training, but also that aspiration and that self-motivation and drive to want to achieve something. And I think this is where Andy and I are looking at a piece of work that we need to do about raising aspirations from a very young age so that they've got that inbuilt motivation and drive. So as Tara said, yes, it can be dependent on when they come into care, but even some of our young people coming into care have had a history of erratic or poor engagement in education, which is having a knock-on impact. And although we're trying to narrow that gap over that period of time that they remain in care, we can't control what happened before they came into care.
Yes, Anne.
I think there is another side as well that kind of pulls all of that together and kind of touches on what Counselor Matthews was saying about putting in more support and are we doing enough? Is that even for our young people who have been in care for a number of years, they have had high levels of support from foster carers, from social workers, from virtual school, from the health teams. And they've, they've had a lot of access to that. And actually, they get to a point in their teenage years where they think they want to, to normalise themselves. And so it's a conscious decision not to engage with the health assessments, not to engage with virtual school for EEPAT, not to engage with education, because they look at their peers who are not in care and see that they are not bombarded with professionals going for meetings. And so they choose to disengage from things. And it doesn't matter what we as foster carers and what other professionals have done to build the aspirations of these children, to, to motivate them and support them. If that's the choice that they make, then that is a real battle that we have.
Thank you, Anne, I think that was, yeah, very valuable. Counselor Matthews.
Thank you, and I absolutely get it. But as you read through this, it says two young people in custody. I think custody makes education provision. I'd be really surprised if they're, if they're not engaged in education even though they're in custody. Seventeen were young parents and not currently able to work, access education due to pairing. I'm amazed by that. That suggests the facility and provision is not there for them to take their, their young, young children or babies or what have you. And that's a huge number and to me, asks all sorts of other questions. Eleven were unable to access employment due to their immigration status, so I don't think they should be in the data at all. Because if then, if they don't qualify for it, why, we, we can't say they're, they're not doing it because they shouldn't be in the numbers. Four young people were not in contact with the service. I think that's really scary because that's my child, four of them. Where are they? What's going on? And twenty-eight were unable to work due to illness, stroke, disability. And again, I'm absolutely shocked by that. Illness is one issue, we've discussed this already. Disability is another thing. We live in, in an access world where everything is geared to providing equal opportunity and disability. And education is the best of all of that. And I, I just think that, you know, saying we're working hard, we're working hard, this is wrong. This is not right. I don't like it. But can I say, that's absolutely not a criticism of you or anybody else, and indeed even of the team. I'm asking that we look really hard at this because if we can crack this, it will just be really good. We are their mums and dads and I know they're wearing, you know, we can't wear a heart and a cigar, bless you, you've got a little child. Don't worry about education or your future, bring that little child into a world where it doesn't matter.
Tracy, do you want?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. At previous meeting, the panel requested having a sort of briefing in relation to employment, education and training for care leavers. Emily's been working with Andy and Sarah, looking for a possible date, which we've identified as being Tuesday, the fifth of June at two o'clock via Teams. So we'll send out an appointment after the meeting. If you could respond to that, let us know when you can attend. But hopefully then we'll be able to go into detail a bit more about some of these issues that you're raising today.
Thank you for that. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, I, I think actually, Clark, between a rock and a hard place here because this is a data report. So we're seeing the data and the information around the data. We're not, and we, we can hear the compassion and the care and everything that's going on behind that. You can't report that because of the complexities, obviously, and the detail, we just don't have access to it. So we know it's being done and we know we're very good at it. We know from the reports from all our homes and everything, we know we're very good at it. But it's because we're seeing this raw data that then it flashes it up and then we feel, you know, quite rightly, we're saying that it doesn't feel right, it doesn't feel right because we're just looking at that data. And that data doesn't seem to be in the right order. We, you look, you're talking to people who are, I suppose, a lot older and know that education sets you free. And we, and we've got values, we know the dangers of internet and people are, no, he's quite right, that people are going to the internet to, to solve problems. So for me, it's a question of, we've got the data and we're looking at raw data and that's what you're pulling off in your report, quite rightly. And so it's the difference between the two and some of it can't be reported at all because it's just too private, too complex and sensitive. So that's where I think you're, you need to kind of separate it out for us a bit and hopefully drill down and show us a drilled-down report that you can, that's allowed, that will satisfy particularly around this target. And maybe this target's not right. You know, you maybe need to look at this particular target because as you said, there'll be other successes within this that somewhere else, they're doing very well, but this is something that you have to report on because that's the data that's sitting there, so you're going to pull it off. So you can't really, you can't win. I do appreciate that, I appreciate where you're coming from, but also my colleagues' points are quite right. So yeah, if we could look at it maybe in a different way or maybe look at that particular target, maybe it needs adjustment. Thank you. Thank you, Chair, for your indulgence, sorry about that.
Thank you. Do you want, you're happy, not, you don't, yeah. So thank you very much, I think that concludes the discussion. I propose the panel has reviewed the report and is satisfied with the performance of the measures relevant to children in care quarter three of 2023-24. Just adding in that we're going to look at this ill stroke disabled and see if we can do, yeah, yeah, I assume we would be. Can I ask you to raise your hands if you're in agreement, please? Okay, that's great, that's unanimous again. So thank you, that is agreed and thank you very much, Tara. Item seven, Fostering Quarterly Performance Report Quarter Three. This item on page is seventy-one to ninety-four of the Agenda Pack provides the panel with an overview of the fostering service performance for quarter three from October to December twenty, twenty-three. The report was presented by Deborah Crawford, Head of Service, Fostering and Adoption. The panel is invited to review and comment on the contents of this report and accept the attached report as an accurate overview of the fostering service. Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you and good morning. Quite rightly, we're here to discuss quarter three report today. And I'd like to start off on a positive note and follow my learned colleague at the end of the row about talking about the efforts, continued efforts, hard work and recognition of our fostering families. So foster carers and their families and their support networks and also the staff within the regulated service that serve to support and supervise foster, foster carer households as a, as a continuous part of the national minimum standards and regulations within our setting. It's been quite a busy and quite an active period on a number of levels. There's some positive news in the sense that the, the Ofsted data return, which was completed in March twenty-three, the published findings were made available in November twenty-three. And whilst, when we, when we complete that Ofsted data return, you kind of think, what, where does all this information go and what does it mean? And what impact does it have? And it's very interesting to be made aware from the Department for Education that it tells us really what the landscape is looking like, both locally, regionally and nationally in terms of the recruitment and retention of foster carers to care for children in care, which as you will appreciate from earlier reports in my presentation today, that there has been a continued growth in the number of children in care across the country from the point of where Covid started to, to where we are now. I'm pleased to say that today's figure of seven hundred and fifty-six actually is exactly as it was on the thirty-first of December. So there hasn't been such a significant variance in the Lincolnshire quota as of today. What that data did reveal, the national data did reveal, is that fostering is in a very difficult place nationally. And I would not want anybody to be, to misunderstand the seriousness and severity of the landscape across the country. What that data did in, in actually report was that forty-three per cent of fostering mainstream households are actually sat within the independent sector. And there are a number of complexities and variables. And there are a number of complexities and variables to, which would need to be researched to be able to confirm what that was about. What it does say to us, though, is that the landscape out there is very difficult in terms of recruiting and retaining people to take on this volunteer role. As always, and as a measure of consistency, I always like to express my absolute gratitude to people who care for our children because it is no mean feat. I'm not a foster carer. And I remember when I first joined the service, the foster carer said to me, I wouldn't want to do your job. And I said, I can go home. I can go home. But that's not to say that we are, any of us within our service are switched off and not sensitive to the needs of our children that are often distressed, exhibited by distressed behaviours, trauma. But actually, what we have is a stickable fostering network and community within Lincolnshire that I'm pleased to say continue to do an outstanding and committed level of work and work well with the local authority in its different guises and its different roles. Social workers, virtual school, senior managers, leaving care, health, education, not to omit anybody. So that interface, what I'm trying to say is foster carers are a part of the team around the child and are treated and respected in that way. So I'm grateful to all of those people who are with and have remained with Lincolnshire throughout this quarter period. And what I'm pleased to say is that we've had, to date this year, an additional 12 fostering households that have been approved by fostering panel. And we've got more to come up until the end of this month, which I will report on in quarter four. Even though 12 seems quite a small number, we are part of a regional group. And whilst I don't want to quote other areas' data because that's not my role or task, I am mindful that Lincolnshire are holding their own, albeit in a really difficult backdrop. I've worked in regulated services now for 11 years. I've worked for the council for 31 nearly, and this is the hardest I've ever known it. So whilst I don't want to kind of bring the mood down because there's actually lots of positive things we're doing to counteract that and ensure that we invest in more families in Lincolnshire stepping forward, that is our reality. What that means for children is that we have got, most of our children that are in foster placements, that are in care, are with our own foster carers. That's important. It's important that they're local. It's important in terms of their community, their cultural ties, their commitment to family time, their education, their health. So there's so much wrapped up in that. But we also, again, have to be realistic that sometimes we have to resource external placements. And what I mean by that is that we have to reach out through a commissioning process to our independent fostering agencies. Our starting point is that children have the right and need to live within a family. We do accept and understand that some children's needs are such that actually they do need to be in a residential setting. But actually, we start with family first. And if we can, we do that. And I'm very grateful to Anne this morning because she is one of our foster carers who very clearly has got a voice and very clearly has got a lot of experience. And I do appreciate and value her presence and also her contributions to the meeting because actually, I don't do it, Anne does. And Anne is a representative of our 285 households. What I would say is that the cost to children and the cost to the local authorities' public purse by using, you know, external placements is quite profound. And we don't want to do that if we don't have to. And it goes through a very rigorous quality assurance process. And actually, it's only once it's agreed by a senior manager that we look to go out to identify an alternative placement. I think it's been fair to acknowledge this morning that, you know, we are managing to achieve placement stability. And as Tara has rightly said, that it is a cumulative figure, which I will report final year end when we next meet in July of this year. Likewise, we are very mindful about the number of children that have been in the same placement for at least two years. And that figure is known as NI63, stands at 71.6%, which again suggests good performance. The figures tell part of the story, the qualitative data, quantitative data. So explaining what children's movements look like is known by the social worker, is known by the family, is known by the foster carers and such like. So that is captured, but it's discussed in the appropriate place where it needs to be. I think, just to kind of finish off my introduction, I did talk about it being an active period. And there's a couple of key initiatives that I want to talk about. Lincolnshire are now well embedded in their Pathfinder status. And as a co-lead of Pillow Four, which is in relation to the Support for Family Networks and family network support packages, doesn't actually directly have a bearing on the fostering role. But what it does do is support and reinforce the way that Lincolnshire was already set up in that before we even consider bringing children into foster placements, we research and we look at the family network and who's available in that family. And the part of the government's initiative around family support networks is about ensuring that all authorities do that as good practice. So when we were duly invited to become Pathfinder, we embraced that opportunity. And it is about improving and learning, but also being really confident in the process that we've already got embedded. So, you know, it is about trial and testing, a new way of working. But Lincolnshire had got a foot up the ladder, so to speak. So we've embraced that. We're underway. And we are looking at ensuring that, as working as part of a multi-agency group with our colleagues from health, our colleagues from education, our colleagues from the police and leaving care and such like, that we are actually looking at how we support families and use support network packages to prevent children coming into care. So it's something that we do already, but the government have given us some extra flexibility, if you like, to the way that we work. So that's really positive because it does fit with the kinship agenda, which is around family, friends and people who are connected to children. Moving swiftly on to the kinship agenda. So when I talk about kinship, I use the very broad definition. And the government equally have used the broad definition when they launched Championing Kinship Care, which is the kinship strategy that was launched literally just before Christmas. What that means is that, and again, in Lincolnshire, we treat foster carers who care for, I'll use the word stranger children, so children that are not directly related to them or known to them. And carers who are kinship carers, where they are approved to care for children who they know or they're related to. We treat them fair and equitably and always have done in terms of financial allowances, in terms of access to training and in terms of the supervision and support. And they all have to meet the national minimum standards. Our job is about supporting them in their very difficult task, but also making sure that we're meeting the regulations, which are very stringent. So what the government have done in recognition that not everywhere is in the same place is that they have launched the kinship strategy. They want an ambassador for kinship carers. They want to recognise what families and those in communities do for children. So essentially, there was a meeting in the early part of this year that Tara Jones and I attended. And we're just waiting to hear which eight local authorities are going to be invited to trial and test how we work with kinship foster carers, those who privately foster children, those who have child arrangement orders or those where they're subject to special guardianship orders. And I get the legality of this are really complicated. But this is a good news story nationally, and it's a good news story for Lincolnshire. Because one, it reaffirms what we do well. And two, it gives us an opportunity to review, embrace and alter any practices that we might need to. So I'm really pleased because 25% of our fostering approved households are foster carers who are known to that child or have a connection to those children they care for. So it's a massive part of our fostering kind of workforce, so to speak. So I'm really pleased that that is a national initiative now. And, you know, it's going to be quite far reaching in terms of putting everything on an even playing field across the country. I move on very swiftly. I think I've already alluded to the fact that the recruitment and retention is, you know, it's part of our daily business. It runs through everything we do. Retention is the best form of our recruitment in that, you know, our foster carers are supported and that they have a sense of community and that we are doing what we should do as a registered fostering agency, of which we are. Foster carer champions are part of the recruitment as well, foster carers. Our prep course is back to face to face and has been for a while. The reality is that the number of people making inquiries to foster has dropped significantly. And because we're part of a regional group and also because we, all of our fostering households are signed up to Fostering Network, which is the UK's leading charity, which champions foster carers, we get all of the national research from them or through the government website. I know that Lincolnshire are in the same similar position or in some comparators above where colleagues are across the country. It is a national problem. And the government, by acknowledging it's a national problem, announced a particular initiative called Fosterlink Service. And what that is, is In Stable Homes Built Unloved, the report completed by Josh McAllister into children's social care. What they identified was that they could see what was on the horizon with fostering. And as a direct consequence of that, they are supporting local authorities across the country by means of a visit over three to four days where they look at all of their data. They look at their customs and practices with regards to advertising, marketing, recruitment and retention. And I'm very pleased to say that our designated DFE nominated individual is coming to us on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week and a follow-up visit on the 27th of March. I don't know what that's going to produce. The person who is coming has been appointed by the DFE. I've had several conversations with her, looking forward to meet her. I'm pleased to say that Lincolnshire are ready and prepared for the go, for the start. They're going to be meeting with foster carer, or she's going to be meeting with foster carers, officers within the, that work within the fostering service. Going to be working with the agency decision maker who signs off all the panel work. They're going to be meeting with the fostering panel chair, the agency panel advisor. So it's a very robust and very thorough health check of where we are. But it signifies that the government understands the problem that we have now, immediate and probably longer term. So I welcome this, the service, the council welcome this as a good health check so that we can be clear, actually, things that we do well, things that perhaps we need to do differently. And actually, we can learn from others and others can learn from us, which is a healthy place to be. I am pleased to say that we've been quite visible out in the community and we've got lots of different advertising things going on. It's not because we're not ambitious or creative. It is just hard. It's tough. And we are, you know, we're hopeful that when the report from Fosterlink will come into the director of Children's Services about 30 days after the visit, that hopefully it will kind of reflect some of what, you know, what we do. But also perhaps give us ideas and inspiration for moving forward. Who knows? But it's something that we are absolutely welcoming and embrace to, you know, look forward to really. Our efforts for children requiring permanence remain as they ever were. And I think what has been really good in this report is that on page 85 and 86, you've just got a little bit of an idea about some of the profiles that we do for our children. We've got 36 children at the moment that where we're looking to secure permanence. That is a longer term commitment to children, not the same as a legal order of adoption or a special guardianship order, but it does give them the opportunity to live in a settled family. I won't say for life, although, you know, I know from some foster carer, from some foster carers' experiences, children are saying, I'm here and I'm staying until I'm an adult or I'm actually not buying a home. I'm here forever, which is a great news story. But actually, you know, we do want children to have that stability and security with people who they can call their family. That's really important. We are constantly trying to family find for children. And that's never off the agenda in terms of our recruitment. But in terms of our day-to-day activity as supervising social workers and fostering managers. I think it's really pleasing that we have a really good approach to our training and development and that there are a number of accredited training courses, a number of different practice workshops, that we obviously ensure that foster carers and their foster, you know, and their families are engaged with. Not only is it about learning and development, but it's also about ensuring that we are supportive and provide bespoke training where we need to, if there are particular issues for particular children. And there is areas that we can draw upon knowledge from our colleagues in health, our colleagues in education, or it's something that we need to get in from somewhere else. So we're quite attuned to that and that is always looked at as part of foster carer supervision, but also their annual reviews. So training and development is never off the agenda. And we provide that through e-learning, face to face. We've got some carers who may have a particular disability or are unable to complete the training. So in those instances, we provide support to do that. You know, it's something that is our responsibility. It's the agency's responsibility to make sure that those national minimum standards are met. So we take that, you know, corporately very seriously. And Ofsted, take it seriously, as you'll see that we obviously had an Ofsted inspection earlier in the year. And it was regarded that fostering was an outstanding service. So I'm pleased that that recognition is, you know, is heard at that kind of big level, really. Part of the training development is also through the learning homes and the kind of caring to learn hub. And that, I'm pleased to say, incorporates the training, training, support and development standards for foster carers that all carers have to complete within their first 12 months of approval or for kinship carers 18 months. So once it's done, it's done. But that doesn't mean to say that your training is done forever. It's about keeping it and keeping the momentum going. I'm delighted to say that we've got the celebration event that's in the final stages of preparation. That's on the 19th of April, so into the next financial year. A number of different awards are going to be presented this year. I will be opening the event and I know that colleagues and county councillors will hopefully join us for what has been a joyous occasion on previous, in previous years. Just wanted to share with you that our Life Chime Achievement Award, and I'm not sharing anything that isn't not known, will be going to some foster carers who wrote to the director in November, December of last year to say, thank you for allowing us to care for as many children that we have done in 42 years of fostering. So that is going to be a moment, I think, of utter joy, celebration and recognition. Because it is, they wrote to thank us, I think says it all. I was really humbled and very proud to lead the service, really. As I've said, kinship is a massive part of our agenda. And you'll see that it's been another very busy period with 47 referrals coming into our kinship referral inbox. Those referrals amount to us completing fostering assessments, assessments for special guardianships, orders and also private fostering, to keep it brief. That is part of our business. That is what we do every day. And we want to achieve where it's safe and reasonable to do so, children living in the heart of their own community where and with their family and people that know them and care for them and where they can keep those relationships alive. And it's really important that that is safe, but that is always our number one go-to. So kinship has been, has been very busy and as has been as are staying put, which sees a number of young still people, still, or young adults, they are, in those arrangements that provides an option for people leaving care. It's not the only option, as we well know. But for some people, for some young adults and for some foster carers, it absolutely works. And we wouldn't want to deny them the opportunity of continuing them. And we wouldn't want to deny them the opportunity um of continuing them with their education, continuing with their place that they call home. So we have to get the balance right for each and every one of those young people. It's a very individual decision. We can't ever think that that's definitely going to happen until we have arrived at that point. It's it's kind of evolved over time. And I think it offers that security for some young people who at eighteen are just not ready to leave home, leave their foster carer and go solo. And we all, you know, we all get that and we understand it. Um, I suppose just by means of conclusion, um I would say that it's been a, uh, yeah, it's been a busy period. Um, I don't think there is ever a quiet period. Um, it's been generally quite positive. Um, I say we're very um keen to meet with um the the DFE next week. Um, I've got staff who have, you know, opened up and said, yeah, yeah, this is, this is good. And their their hearts and minds are in it, foster carers' hearts and minds are in it because we know that we can't do anything on our own. It's all about collaborative working, it's all about respect for the people that care for our children in Lincolnshire, of which I too am a, I'm a corporate parent in that respect. So what we can do to provide good physical, emotional care and that sustainability. Because I know even when children leave foster carers' homes at eighteen, that's not the end of the road. We've got foster carers who are still in, you know, are still in contact with children that they cared for many years ago. And they never become, you know, in those instances, they never become distant, they are like family. And, you know, for every time I hear a story like that, I, you know, feel feel very kind of heartened that um we have a lot of people in this county that want to do the very best by children. So I just, I just want to say again, once again, thank you to all our, our, you know, amazing staff as well because it is, it is not easy um at the moment. And um we're confident we will get through it and it's about working together. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, I will take any questions um as they arise.
Thank you very much, Deborah. Um, Anne, I'll pick on you if I may, any comments you wish to make on the report? Or most specifically about retention and recruitment, any thoughts?
It's always a difficult one when you ask questions like that because I can only speak from, I guess, my experience and and the 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 few foster carers that I'm friends with. And we are all very committed to 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 um to staying within the service. I think we feel very supported um by by the by the team. And that, and and it has been appreciated that the recognition um and the allowances because it does make a difference um when you have a large house. Because you foster, your energy bills are, um, you know, considerably higher than everybody else's because you foster and and so managing that, it 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 does have an impact for us as families. But in in terms of, so it it is good that 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 is recognised um and that we're supported with that. The recruitment side, I I don't know that I can comment on that really because I'm part of the service already and would always just say to people, do it. Um, and do it for Lincolnshire because we do get the support. Um, I've had some challenges um with my young people and my personal circumstances in the last three months. And I have to say that the support has been amazing. The links with other foster carers um that um is provided is is really is testament, you know, to that. Um, I'm not going to pull apart the figures, that's that's your job. Um, I can just give you my personal experience of it and what you were saying earlier is is very true. There is stories behind all of it. But the story here is, the support is all there in it, in it. Um, as a community, we um will continue to do whatever is asked of us with the support that we're provided, focusing on the children, like we need to hear it from them um and see what it, what impact we're having for them. Wasn't very coherent, but there we go, that's my thoughts.
No, thank you, Anne, and thank you for what you do. Um, Deborah, I don't know if you thought, just do it is probably quite a good tagline, isn't it? Yeah, just do it.
If only. But but what I will say is that Anne does just do it, along with lots of other people. Um, because I can never say it enough, but this is about people's choice. They're not compelled, they're not employees of Lincolnshire County Council. So actually, they do it from a good position, is has been my experience um on the whole. And we have got some quite amazing foster carers, I have to say. And I'll never go back and I'll never default from the first comment that was made to me, which is, I wouldn't want your job. And I said, well, I can go home. They can't. It's it's part of life. So I can never say thank you um enough to the people that give their homes and hearts to our children.
Okay, councillor Matthews.
Thank you for your hard work and the hard work of all of the carers. Um, I I've sat here and listened to your report, but it must be the mathematician in me, it must be the data analyst in me that's saying, where are the facts? Um, the data further serves to highlight the concerning downward trend in the number of foster care applications to newly appointed carers. In twenty twenty two, twenty three, a total of four thousand eighty fostering households were approved with five thousand one hundred and thirty resigning, resulting in a deficit of a thousand and fifty. I think I read that somewhere in a newspaper or sort of in the national news. What the national news didn't have is Lincolnshire's position and I can't find Lincolnshire's position in here. The only reference I can find to quarter three data is on page ninety one of the report where it says the number of referrals were forty seven and it goes on to say SG only, Reg twenty four. So it's a lovely report, well done, you're working absolutely hard, we've got all the right people. But please, this is a quarterly report, I think it needs some more precision and data for us to be able to actually say, so what's the situation in Lincolnshire and what can we do to help you and guide you and support you at this challenging time? Um, so I've got no challenges about the report, except it's long on words and short on information.
Did you want to go back?
Oh, yeah, if I may, yeah, yeah, I think um, I think what tends to happen um is that the annual report will give all of that data, take your point councillor Matthews. What I would say is that at the end of December twenty twenty three, Lincolnshire had two hundred and eighty five um households approved. That includes the twelve that were um approved up to the end of December twenty twenty three. Um, it is detailed in the report that we care for five hundred and twenty two of those children out of the seven hundred and fifty six um were in foster care. Um, it equates to sixty nine percent of the children over overall, children in care population overall. In terms of the um daily figures for fostering, they do change because we have carers, um we have fostering panel usually sits on a Wednesday, um but not exclusively. So it can change between um when, once the agency decision maker lawfully signs it off as either an approval or not, the deregistrations are taken account over twenty eight days. So what I can say to you currently is that we have had twenty one um deregistrations um in this year. So yes, there is a deficit. Um, but with respect to other data, um all I can say is that we we look at nationally what the government are reporting to us. And whilst um I can give a breakdown of the um initial inquiries and such like, um, I'm more than happy to do that if if it's of benefit to um each quarterly report.
Tara, did you want to, or you, what's that called it?
I'd just like to give some reassurance that we're one of the strongest performing authorities in terms of our recruitment, retention of carers and our percentage of children in care placed within a family setting.
Thank you. Um, councillor Clark.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Deborah, uh for the report, it was lovely. And I I don't know about anybody else in the room, but I actually felt your passion and your emotion while you were speaking. And I really like that. I like to hear that from from anybody that's talking about the work that they do and particularly this work because it's so in depth and so complex and you're all involved in it. Um, to get back to data, I don't really want to go there, but I have noticed that in the report, later on in the report, it said that you'd, that you'd lost, um, that you'd deregistered twenty fostering households. Um, and I was wondering about the impact of that, that will have an impact because you've explained how impactful that is. But only one there was due to dissatisfaction and we know how very good we are because Ofsted reports give us excellence. So I want to congratulate you on that. Um, so, you know, information is great on this and data, we do need a bit more data. But I I like to hear the passion and the and the voice behind all that work. You really stood up for it and I I like that, I think it's great. Um, the other thing I would like to have some feedback on is the meeting that's going to take place shortly with the DFE. Um, so no doubt we'll get feedback on that at some later date. And also kinship strategy, it sounds like that's a way forward, it's given you additional flexibility so that it's going to help you a lot within the service.
If I can respond, I think, um, just for clarity, the kinship strategy was launched in December. Um, and the government still haven't decided um as of as of today, which eight local authorities. Um, I'm not suggesting that Lincolnshire is one of them, we absolutely don't know. But I think what it does is it creates a level playing field, fairness and equity across the country for families, friends, connected persons that step forward and care for and look after those children that are either connected to them or related to them because they end up becoming either a regulated foster carer and have to do everything in the same way that Anne does. Um, or that they know that they have got a financial element attributed to their household which is fair and consistent and there is a mixed pattern across the country. I have to say in Lincolnshire, we do, we do treat our kinship carers in the very same way because that is a practice that we have chosen to adopt. But I think nationally, it's good for fostering agencies of local authorities and it is only aimed at local authorities because we're the ones that regulate that that those kinship arrangements in the first place. So it will be, it is, it's a positive thing, um, really positive.
I just want to briefly come back. Uh, is there a way that we can ensure that we're one of the eight? Can you put your passion forward to ensure we're one of the eight?
I'm I'm not sure that even that would get us over the finishing line. I think the the Department for Education, um it it's quite, I mean, I hand over to Tara, but I know certainly, you know, we are one of the pathfinding authorities doing other work. Um, they haven't yet selected and I don't know what their criteria is, but Tara, maybe you can just.
Yeah, I mean, it's all clear, all I would say is that we've already got a huge piece of transformational work being one of the um first wave three local authority pathfinders. Um, so it's a huge amount of work that we're doing at the moment.
Okay, thank you, councillor Seer.
Enough the question, I'll speak from my heart, I would thank all of you, special the foster parent. I'm so pleased because I was nationally and I noticed the Lincoln is the first. Not, you know, we're not stuck in for post foster parent. I think the foster parent to take the heart off, I give them a cup and heart and soul, well done you. Um, we should very proud, Lincoln, I'm so proud, you know, I mean, our neighbourhood county struggle for the foster parent and we managed to be on the top and we not that much struggle. And I take a heart of all of you, talk from my heart, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Seer, councillor Matthews.
Tara, Deborah, you're doing a fantastic job, we know that. And my challenge was not about the quality of our service. The challenge as a scrutineer is that, summary, this report provides an overview of the fostering service performance for quarter three. And I feel there's a little bit too much information in there about the national scene without sufficient detail about the performance. So I'm not in any way challenging or criticizing what we've done. I'm asking that as a scrutineer, if we're going to have quarterly performance data reviews that we, or performance reviews, that we have the data on a quarterly basis so that we can see how many, is it falling, is it going up, should we be putting additional resource in? What's going well, what's not going well? And so that is a request, it's not a challenge or criticism of the excellent work that you're doing for for both of you. It's just that it's difficult as a scrutineer to actually scrutinize stuff that that is reportage as information, not as uh data.
Good, Tara.
Thank you councillor Matthews, yeah, you're absolutely right, we can build in a a performance section um because a lot of the narrative is because of that work that we're being, that's being done within the fostering service and um through the foster carers, that it's enabled us to not see that significant drop that other local authorities. So I think we need the narrative, but absolutely to back up those key figures for you. Um, we'll we'll make sure that happens in in the next report, thank you.
Okay, councillor Hay.
Lovely report, thank you very much, Deborah, um really welcome it, cautiously, I have to say because it's as we stand at the moment, um we've got twelve new families, foster families ready, but we're losing possibly twenty, so we're okay at the moment. Um, we talk about children going out of county and I'm presuming that that doesn't necessarily mean they're going to strangers out of county. They could be going to relations as part of it, so, but why do we put sending children out of county as a better priority for the children to putting them in our residential centres? And we might get to the stage, are we getting close to capacity on the residential centres that we may need to provide more provision in the fu, in the near future for them?
Yeah, I'll take the first, the first part, so we always believe that actually a child has the right to be placed in a family setting. So we do use independent fostering agencies that are either operating in Lincolnshire or they're operating outside of Lincolnshire because if that's right for the child, um, we will always place in foster care first and we will always, always explore um any of the um family members or extended family networks or friends or connected people, absolutely. For some children, it is absolutely their assessed need that they do need residential care. And that might be for a very short time, it might be for an assessment, maybe stabilize and help that young child or young person to recover to then be able to step across into foster care or even a reunification home. And I think if you look at our children in care transformation programme, we've got a real sharp eye um around children's needs and being able to step them across or return them home where possible. And we've had some huge success um in relation to um moving children across and out of residential care so they can be in a family setting. Um, as you know, we've got two new children's homes um that have opened in Lincolnshire, so Robin House earlier on in the year, which provides for um residential um placements for children. Um, those children will not necessarily remain in Robin House. Um, they will have that assessment, that therapeutic work wrapped around um until it is assessed that it's absolutely right and appropriate for them either to step across to foster care or indeed um step down um and return home. And then our second um children's home is for the older age range children and that's at Louth Riverhead House that we've just got through the Ofsted inspection. Um, it was really interesting that um the government announced that they were going to be providing um opportunities again for uh capital funding for local authorities um to build new children's homes or or um, you know, add to their residential estate. I think that's something Lincolnshire might might look for in the future. Um, uh, but, um, you know, we we're very much focused on residential is an assessed need and we. But, you know, we, we're very much focused on residential is an assessed need and we always look to place within foster care first.
Thank you. Just as a, a quick comment from me. When you mentioned the, the Riverhead at Louth, I sort of majored on getting a visiting member. I didn't say how great that is and what a pleasure it's going to be to have to go and find somebody to go and and be the visiting member. And I shall make sure I'm one of the first that goes as well. But yes, I just wanted to say what a positive that is for Lincolnshire. Do we have any further questions? No, that is great, Deborah. Thank you very much. I need to just pass on my thanks to you, your team and, and to all the foster carers. Attending the Foster Awards is, is one of those pleasures of the role that I have. It's one of the things that I look forward to every time. And it's one of the things that I, I quote experiences from. And when I hear about some of the foster carers, I pass that on all the time and it is a real pleasure. I haven't checked my diary, but I'm hoping that that's, oh, good. So, so thank you for that. Now, so that concludes the discussion. I propose that the panel has reviewed the work and progress within the service and accepts the attached report as an accurate overview of the fostering service. I would request that we, we do just get the more data that we've committed to for, for the next report. And also, I would ask that we get some feedback on the Foster Link report, whatever meeting is the soonest that we can get that. I think that's going to be really interesting. This, this is probably one of the most challenging reports we've had from yous, well, from fostering altogether in the time that I've been doing this. And I think it's important that we all recognise that the challenges are there. It's good to see all the marketing stuff as well. You know, I enjoy that. Yeah. So can I ask that you raise your hand if you are in agreement, please? And abstentions, thank you guys. So that's one abstention and then, yes, and then four, four. Thank you very much. Thank you once again, Deborah. So we move on to agenda item eight, corporate parenting panel work programme. This item on page 85 to 88, the agenda pack enables the panel to comment on the content of its work programme. The report will be presented by Tracy Johnson, senior scrutiny officer. Tracy, thank you.
Thank you, chairman. I have one amendment to the work programmes report. A report on the proposed constitutional changes to the corporate parenting panel will be brought to the 9th of May meeting. These proposals are then due to be ratified by the county council at its AGM on 17th of May. So it'll just be setting out some new ways of working for the, the panel. Also on the 9th of May agenda, we will have the Voices for Choices update and the annual update on the action plan for the Children in Care Sufficiency Strategy 2023-27. And I suppose that's it. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I was looking for the bit to emphasise the training that we're going to have, which I thought we got written down there. Just, do you want to just repeat it for everybody, please?
Yeah, so in relation to the Eat workshop, the employment education training workshop, we'll send out appointment and it's the 5th of June at two o'clock and it'll be on Teams. So we'll get some appointments sent out to everybody. So if you can just let us know if you can attend.
Okay, thank you. So the corporate parenting panel is invited to review and approve the work programme and highlight any additional activity which could be included for consideration in the work programme. Do we have any comments or? Yeah, councillor Seer, then councillor Clark.
I, I, I won't be here on 5th of June. I'll go to county, okay? But you will record then. I can look back when I come back. Thank you.
Okay. councillor Clark.
Thank you, Chair. I think at our last meeting, I'd asked for further details on commission services out at Peterborough in a future meeting or in a briefing. It was about children being placed in a place, I, I think. I did ask for that. I've written it down. We've got commissioning services out at Peterborough. And I'd asked for a re, a reply on that. I'd asked for that to come back at a future meeting.
I think that was an accompanied asylum seekers and, and the fact that the majority are out there.
Yeah, it was. Yeah. And why were we using Peterborough and why, you know, are we not looking at trying to bring a service like that to Lincoln? And that, I think that's what I was looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're looking to that. I know there was some information, I think, that was circulated around. I'm not sure that was linked to that or something else, but we'll, we'll follow up on that for you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on that? Okay, so that concludes this discussion. I propose that we approve the work programme as detailed on page 85 to 88 of the agenda pack, subject to the item mentioned. Can I ask you to raise your hands if you're in agreement, please? Okay, that's unanimous. So what's that, five to 12? And that's the end of the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance. Thank you very much.